So I just wanted to welcome everybody tonight to our first Marina or MPC trustee area two town hall meeting. This was something that when I was out working to represent the folks in Marina and Ork communities on this board, had in my, my plan to do because my, my professional experience tells me that to be able to represent this community, I need to be able to talk to you. And so tonight I'm talking to a lot of folks who work at MPC, which is cool. And I appreciate you guys coming out to show support, but we also have a number of community members here and it actually makes me really happy that I can name them. And also would like to point out my fellow trustee Natalia Molina in the room. Natalia represents Seaside and I think Delray Oaks, part of Delray Oaks. So thanks for coming out to support. We have a little program to that. We wanted to just get people sort of acquainted to MPC, a little focus on the Marina area and what we're doing here. And then have a chance to just talk about how we can be a better service to this community. And that's really, I think, what my focus is going to be on the board. We have a really great opportunity to influence the dialogue at our community college. So that this diverse community that is very much in a growth mode, both in terms of adding population and with the youth of our, the young nature of our community to be helping to make sure that the college, which has been there for about 50 years, is ready to serve us and our kids. And that was one of the things that I also said, you know, I live in this community. I want to have full faith when my children are in that college search to be able to say, MPC would be a great place for you to start. And, um, and I want all the families in my community to have that option for their kids. So just want to thank you again for being here. Thanks. I'm going to introduce Dr. Tribin, who's going to take us through some few slides. And just again, I want to appreciate the staff because I know that this is a new thing. This is the first time we're doing this in our community and I hope that it won't be the last. So thanks.
Absolutely. Not going to be the last. So Yuri asked me to put together a few slides and nothing else to share with you where the college is going and what we've been up to, the major changes, major advances, but also to stimulate the conversation for later and for you to give input certainly to Yuri's benefit and for all of our benefits. So that's the intention. Here's our brief agenda tonight that we worked on with Yuri. We're going to talk, you know, the top part is my presentation and then trustee Anderson will engage with you in an open discussion. So let's go ahead and get started. MPC has been focusing on student success relentlessly. That is the guiding star. That's the North Star and that is what we're all about. That focusing on student success is more than a tagline. In fact, it's not necessarily our tagline. When we get into tough, challenging conversations, we say, what is, what's best for students? You know, are we going to hire this position, that position, and what is best for students? So that's what we've been about. So now I'm going to share with you a few stats that obviously reflect the work of our entire campus community. So here, this slide tells a story and real quickly what you're seeing is two bars, two sets of numbers. One is about 8,500 full-time equivalent students. That was back in 2008, '09 and more recently, 2017, '18, our last fully audited year at 6300. And though many of you in the room understand how FTS translates directly into MINE. And particularly back then, the colleges were funded solely on how many bodies you taught, how many people. So we lost 2,200 full-time equivalent students. We lost those students because of changes in the funding rules of the state level. Obviously Monterey Peninsula College and several coastal California districts. The Brio, Monterey, Santa Barbara, Cuesta, Santa Rosa, up in the wine country, all focusing very large amounts of their resource, their faculty resource, their facility resource, on so-called lifelong learning. Now lifelong learning means a lot of things to a lot of people. But in this case, I'm using it as a person perhaps of my description that comes in and takes a class and I pass it, but then I come right back and take the same class and I take the same class and I'm becoming a better dancer, I'm becoming a better artist, I'm becoming a better theater performer. But my participation in the higher education system is being subsidized by the California taxpayer big time. The taxpayer shoulders the burden of education in the state. So the state stopped that, that type of repeated enrollments and it really hit us pretty hard. So we adjusted and this grab tells a story. You heard Yuri talk about how we are a changing community here. We're a younger community in trustee area two, we're a diverse community in trustee area two. This program, Extended Opportunities Program Services, the OPS, is a program that California community colleges have to serve our most needy, most challenged students. They have at least two so-called educational disadvantages. They are first generation, low income, and very often other challenges that they have. We now have 800 students in this program. What you see here is going back to '08, '09. We've chosen '08, '09 because that was the last fully audited year. That was the last year MPC received the most money per student based on just an access model. And now of course our funding is shifting to student success model. We were changing towards student success long before the states started changing their funding plan. So these are, these are academic years going along here. You can see the number of degrees and certificates just skyrocketing. Last year, 102 degrees and certificates, the green bars, associate degree for transfer, blue bar, associate, our internal MPC associate degree, and then orange certificate of achievement. 102 last year. We are projecting 261 are going to complete this May. Actually, June 1st is our graduation. Please come if you can. So that's a story of success with students that actually statistically aren't even supposed to go to college, let alone succeed in college. Statistically in our nation, that population has not done well, but they certainly are. Here again, the same two years, we're taking a look back in 2008, '09. 404 credit degrees and certificates avoided. And then last, in our last fully audited year, about 900 in the D. So when we say we're focusing on student success, these data slides share that. They show that we have them. And then, you know, when it comes to our transfer mission, we have certainly improved the number or increased the number of students that are transferring to both our CSU system. Hello, come on in, have a seat. The gray bar here represents the number of students transferring to the CSU system and the blue bar to the UC system. And you can see the rates going up in that same timeframe. Clearly, most of our CSU transfers are going right here to CSMB. We're a very strong partner of CSMB that is something that actually has evolved in the relatively recent past very mindfully in both institutions. We now have strategic partnerships. We share a Hispanic-serving institution grant called Ready, Set, Transfer. We have employees that we're paying that are working on the CSMB campus. We're going to have them on our campus. Our director of Hispanic-serving institution programs is there, Diego Espinoza.
Lives in our star area. Yay! One of ours.
So we're moving, moving in the right direction. We, we've changed, this whole, this change has changed the face of who we are and it certainly has changed our age. So if you look again at the same comparison going back to '08, '09, nearly 53% of our population was white, non-Hispanic. And then the other, other ethnicities and Hispanic population have chosen these groups because they tell, they tell the biggest story. Especially if you look at 19% of the student population in '08, '09 selecting them their identity as Hispanic. And then in 2017, '18, nearly 39%. And that number is much higher in Yuri's trustee area. That number is way above 40% in this area, in this part of our service district. But any one of these changes, age, the focus on, on success, any one of these changes is a major change for an institution and all these things have been happening in MPC. So we're very proud of the work that our team has done. Likewise, many of your students were engaged in those types of personal enrichment classes. They tend to be of an older age and now we've really increased. This green bar is our 24, age 24 or less, we're now almost 48%. Almost half our student population is 24 years old or younger. We're not keeping education away from the people like you, who, I mean, forgive me, but none of you are 24. But neither am I. But where we've been strategically marketing to this group, we have been. And we're going to be presenting to the board on marketing in June. It's another thing that trustee Anderson has asked for. And we'll be bringing some of the strategies that we've left over. We can certainly improve those, but we've been really targeting on that group and bringing programs that we think will serve trustee area two. All right. Many of you know we have brought our college into the high school all across the state of California. But I will say for Monterey Peninsula College, a college our size, we have done this to a greater degree than any of our neighbors, haven't we? So we are in all five public high schools. These are the names of the programs that we have in these high schools. Please know that when you see a program, it's the result of a conversation and a communication with people like Kiran Kamath, our vice president of academics, and her deans and the principals, Rebecca Tyson and Marina High School, for example, and their faculty. They have to come up together with what program does the high school want the children need and for which we have faculty that are qualified to offer college-level, fully rigorous, fully transferable courses in the high school. So this is quite a conversation. So you see that the programs can be, represent a wide diversity of disciplines and that is evolving. But certainly Marina High School is out ahead of all in terms of the numbers of students being served. They are an early high school. They're early college high school. I was changed at the MPUSD level and I thought that was a brilliant move. And certainly all the other MPUSD high schools are coming on board. Visit for jet, these are just total enrollments. Now enrollment, different from full-time equivalent students, right? An enrollment is if you enroll in a biology class, that counts as one. But then if you enroll in a PE class, now that counts as two enrollments. And if you enroll in another class, it's three enrollments. So you, your enrollments can be duplicated. This is total number of enrollments. That's the number on the top. So in 2017, '18, our first year out, five, almost 590 enrollments, 24 sections. So certainly for those of you in the room that are administrators of either academic institutions or leaders there or other community posts, this number here shows you a level of effort, the number of faculty that have to be identified, that have to be approved, that have to be eligible to teach, that have to be supported. Okay, so 24 sections, 42 sections. And now we're projecting next year, Ms. Kamath tells me, we're projecting 87. That might be, that's on the high side probably, but it most likely won't be any lower than 75. And 2,628 enrollments. And I don't, I don't think this is too much of an estimate because I know that Ms. Kamath and the team are pushing. They try to get more English and more sections out in the community. So we're really taking off and getting after that in a big way. So that is the end of my part, but I certainly am here to answer any questions you may have about the data before I turn it over to Yuri to take us home. Any questions about Monterey Peninsula College data you saw?
How about the governor's budget and sympathy from our state legislature and even the feds when it comes to community college funding, you know, for facilities and ultimately filling the gap, I guess you could say?
Yeah. So it's, it has been since certainly President Obama, there has been a very strong and continuing, there's been a very strong support for the two-year school. And this is certainly as long as I've been in higher education administration, going back to the early 2000s, before that as a faculty member, the United States is seeing the value of two-year school and seeing how, when I say value here, I'm also talking about economic value. I mean, how much does it cost to highly educate a person in California community college versus a UC in the first two years of their, I mean, how much does it cost you, the taxpayer? Does it cost a lot less and get them exactly where they need to be? So there, there's been a real realization for them. So I'm very pleased that this governor is continuing like the last governor in supporting community colleges. I'm now pleased about everything about the way the funding formula is set up and some of the unintended consequences of that that are actually going to be harmful for students, in my opinion. But in overall, in general, we have a very pro-education legislator and a very pro-education governor. I'm very pleased about that because of the other details we can sort out. But the new funding formulas, we struggle for California for a variety of reasons. But we're getting funded.
About housing students that are homeless, I mean, that's kind of the, it's all the rage, right?
Yeah, certainly tracking through the legislature, so.
Do you have services for students that are homeless?
We have services for students who are homeless. We have food banks. We have a, here is a sign that says, "Want food? Pantry updates." We have a food pantry. We, for, for homeless students, they can use our facilities now. They get assistance, they get access to counseling, they get referral to counseling out in the community. We had just the other day in our scholarship ceremony, heard from a homeless woman who was a homeless student. She presented at a scholarship ceremony. She used her first financial aid check to purchase an RV. And because of her interactions with an MPC counselor, she realized that she could do it. She could stay engaged and then she got involved, had a job on MPC with Mike Rasmussen, the football coach. And she raised, is raising her two daughters as a single parent. And so that's an example. Now, as it comes to the state of California, I certainly am not in a position to answer. Maybe, maybe Yuri will because I need to sit down here. But the, the bill that's tracking to allow homeless students to sleep and camp on community college if they have parking lots, that's the bill. It's not providing housing. So I support anything that supports our students. I am also an administrator that has to see how will we be funded to provide a safe environment, to provide an environment that actually we can then manage, right? You're not going to go up to the sleeping bag and say, "Are you a student in good standing?" Because that's the current language. So there's a lot there that we who have the challenge of solving all of our social concerns through education, please, if you're going to give us the mantle and the yoke of other challenges that are very important to our society without giving us the funding that the other parts of our society need, that's, that's a big concern. We have a college to run and we need, we need to do it right. Certainly if we're going to be providing a space for homeless human beings, we need to be able to do it in a safe, healthy manner. And we have four security people, four total for three campuses. That's not enough, so give me some help. But with that being said, I am now sitting down. Yuri's standing up.
Before you sit down though, can you talk a little bit about this education center? Some of the things, you know, our facilities in that area?
Thanks for that reminder. Yes. So you're, you are on the Marina Education Center. Its initial intent was to be a front door. In fact, the initial intent of this, this building here was that students would come, get a taste of higher education and be so, be then hooked in and have to go to the main campus to complete their studies. That was really the intent. Certainly since hiring Ms. Kamath coming in with a very strong academic background, right away said, "We need to make Marina a place where it is a destination center." That has, forgive the, the commercial analogy, but you know, big shopping areas in, back in the day before Amazon, where they had the anchor store? But we now have anchor programs. We've moved the medical assistant program here. You can get your medical assistant degree here. We doubled the size to meet the needs of the Montage Health. Was hiring more doctors. They asked MPC to generate more medical assistance. So they doubled the medical assistant program. We moved the medical assistant program out here. We're bringing more programs that can be started and finished here because we have people from North County and Salinas and South County and them getting on their public transportation to get here. And then the thought that they have to then even drive another 10 miles, that's the straw that might break that higher education back. So the idea of bringing full programs here is happening. To Yuri's point is the buildings you see here were funded by Measure I, that was in 2002. There's needs that we have here, I'll talk just very briefly in a second. We, across the street have portables out there. We've expanded the portables. In one of them, for $1 a year lease, the Marina Police Department is here. We appreciate having the Marina Police Department here for that very reasonable expense. We have their presence. Of course, their police department has another, they have a satellite area that they can stage. They run drills and I like having, I like having that presence. Remember, we have four security guards at MPC, 24/7, four, it's four human needs.
On, so you need to give them time?
Yeah, just four is our staff, so we need more. And so having a Marina PD is very, very important. In the future, one of the things we don't have here, we have a classroom space. We have nice classroom space. We have fairly modern, certainly for the time it is built. These are not smart classrooms, so to speak, but they're, they're technologically supported. But we do not have faculty space, we don't have faculty offices. What we want, Mr. Espinoza could write a book about this. If we want students that have traveled long distances, very often through public transportation, to come and enroll in that eight o'clock class, but because of their choice, if they got another one at two o'clock, where do they stay? What do you, what do you do? You get to class at eight, then you get another one at two. And then here you are, next to engine, where do you go? There's no, we need student space, we need flop space, we need couches. We need, that's very important space to a community. And we thought about redoing the community room, but we have one community room, a community room. So we need, we need some other things out here in the future. The land over, over this way, the piece of land, the parcel immediately to our piece is owned by MPC. Across the street, it's owned by MPC. And kitty corner over here, there's a church, an old chapel. That spot is owned by MPC as well. So there's a lot of room here for Yuri Anderson to work with you.
Campus, I'll be at my own. So, I'm not a very formal person. But I, I wanted to create an opportunity for more people in our community to know about what's happening at MPC and what our opportunities are, what our obstacles are. Because I am one person sitting on the board and it's not just what Yuri Anderson wants. I really take my responsibility as your representative seriously. And so I want to know what, what does this community want me to sit at that table and have a K for? And I think that the folks in the room who are on staff will, will say that I'm already sitting at that table and very clearly making it known that we are going to talk about Marina at MPC and that I'm not sure that they want me to tell you the truth. But that's okay because I represent our community and we need a strong voice. So I just wanted to hear, what do you think is important? I mean, so I sent out a newsletter, which I think you all got, and told you about some of the things that we've been working on, trying to get some measurable goals, things that are really looking to the future. Having our, our student trustee brought up the issue of transportation to us and so been working to initiate that conversation with MST, so our students can reduce their expenses. Obviously, we're engaged in a search for a new president as Walt just gave us the, "See you later", you know, right now. And that process is moving along. I've got comments on that that I'm going to keep to myself unless someone asks me a question about it. And what else? I think, I think those are the, the main things that we've been doing right now. So any questions you have for me or comments, I'm, I'm here to listen.
A couple of years ago, the newspaper did an article about food services on this camp. And Tom, Tom, not existing, not quite. I mean, you do have a couple of vending machines, kind of. There might be a microwave somewhere in one of these buildings. So besides the idea of having a student lounge, which I think is a really good idea, it would also mean you want to be able to have food. Because the famous point from the story in the newspaper for MPC on 19 was, was the idea that there's no hot food. And so people are coming from work to go to camp, their classes in the evening. And yes, they can go to engine over here, but usually they're rushing to get here. The heck goes going over to, to the shopping area over there kind of stuff. So part of that was going to be the issue about something that could easily, could more readily be fixed. We're not talking about new buildings on other parts of the campus. We're not talking about having to deal with MST if they are, they're going to do a combustion line. But I think offering more food to the students makes a lot of sense.
I, I would agree. But that isn't something that we've had any sort of conversation about. So that's a totally new piece of information for me. And what I haven't seen yet, and I, I think that is all the plan to come, is what is our sort of master plan for the Marina Education Center? What is our, you know, so Dr. Tribin talked about that we've made, increased the medical assisting presence here, but I don't know if we've really had a conversation about like, what are the connections to employment that are coming up? What are the, what are ideas coming out of our community about what might be a hub? Here?
So one of the things that Yuri's been very focused on and interested in engaging in and having you engage in is our development of our education master plan. So in that process, in developing the education master plan, getting unit input through exactly beautiful meetings like this, getting that information down the road, probably through engaging at a board meeting when it's being discussed there, that education master plan for Marina will then drive the facility. Food, student space, faculty space, these are things I know will be in it. We don't, we don't have a general science lab. There's no science lab here. We can teach psychology here, but you can't teach chemistry here. So we need a science, you know, the facility will follow that. But Yuri's been really pushing on getting that education master plan process to be apparent to the public. It's going to be next fall, most likely through board meetings. That's probably the best way because there'll be, staff will be presenting on what we think the education master plan is and then the community can comment on it. And however, Yuri would like to get other comments there. So we do our education master plan, then facilities master plan.
The other question I had to ask is, looking at the number of students you have that are increasing here for the five districts of MPC, but you also have lots of students coming from outside those districts. And so my question is, who represents them on the board? Now, we could sit there and say, I'm going to say the student representative because he represents the whole student body. She said, she, she, correct. But my question is, you're having an increasing number of people coming from South County and you've always had a, a chunk of people coming from Slade. And you've had other people come from Castroville, et cetera, even Thomas here. So the question is, how do we hear from them and what, you know? Like if they're driving really far, you know, you know, Keene City is like, you know, 70 miles away. So for them to really commit to come here, they really want to come here.
That's a really great question. I mean, in my short time in connection to the college, I've seen that there's been a lot of opportunities for folks to be on campus and participate in forums and whatnot. But we, I believe we have a responsibility to do more of this sort of in-community sort of conversation. And I see, we have, every month, our ASMPC president comes out and makes a report to the board. And I'm going to be sad when Yuli Oda, she's graduating, goes because she is so dynamic. But I'm excited about who's going to be coming up behind her because the ASMPC is doing a lot to engage with the student body and to try and make sure the trustees are, the elected trustees are aware of what student needs are. And it's, from my perspective, we need to be creating more space within our dialogue as trustees about those issues. And that isn't something that I feel like we're really strong at right now and that we'll have to work on as a board. Because we're still, you know, I'm, I'm very new as your representative on that board and we're still figuring out what is our relationship, trying to figure out how do we operate? And it's, it's not been completely smooth. People ask me a lot, you know, what's life, was it worth it? And it absolutely is 100% worth it. It's, I'll tell you, my husband does not love it when I come home after a board meeting because it's, you know, 8:30 at night and I am just ready to talk a lot, you know? But I'm really tired and my head hurts because we've been in closed session from 2:00 to 4:00 and then open session from 4:00 to 8:00 and are being asked to approve new programs and new classes and this faculty hire and these tenures and, oh, and we have vision for success that we need to deal with. have vision for success that we need to deal with, and the metrics and all this stuff. So it's, there's a lot that is coming at us, but there's, there's a lot of opportunity, if we create it, for people to give input to those things. And to do that, we need to build time into our processes and be intentional about conversations with MPUSD to, you know, if we talk about a master plan for Marina, that sister feeder district really needs to be a part of that conversation. So it doesn't exactly answer your question. I would say, and I think Natalia would agree with me, that we represent those folks. And one of the things that, you know, criticism that I've heard coming onto the board was that the trustees weren't reachable, that we didn't have emails, that we didn't have phone numbers, those kinds of things. And we, we do. You know, we've been, Joe Green set us up, and I'm in the, I get the all-user emails just like everybody else does, and I'm able, you can find me right in that directory, and Natalia too. So we've tried to make ourselves more available. And I've seen my other colleagues on the board do that as well. So I know that sometimes everyone gets demonized, and I hope that we cannot do that, because I do believe that all of my colleagues on the board, whether we agree or not, are very earnest in their desire to support this college and this district to be successful.
You said that. That's right, right into my next comment. Last year, when you ran, when you and Marina ran for the board, there was a problem with negotiations for faculty. Gosh, those negotiations are going to open up again come July.
They're already open.
And so my question's going to be, now that you're on the board, rather than, rather than to be on the board, how do you deal with adjuncts?
Can you ask a more specific question?
Sure. How about office hours for adjuncts? And actually paying that for office hours.
I'm going to jump in here. That is actually a negotiating, that's an item that's on the table right now, so.
We can't talk about it. But it's going to be, some of these are going to be swirling around the air. Your problem's always been that, what's been written in the newspapers, that the last four, well, since 2008 for sure, financial, finances really take paramount in every issue that comes before the board. You cannot get around that. And so what's happened is that a lot of times, certain aspects get stalled. Five years of union negotiations, kind of stuff gets stalled. So now that we have a new president coming on, we have a board.
I mean, I can't talk about the specifics, but I can say that this board was very intentional in our crafting of our goals for this year to state our expectation that we engage in good faith negotiations expeditiously. And that was something that, I don't like to say credit, I'm definitely a "we" person, but that I sat there and I really pushed for, to say, we need to, as a board, show that we are engaged in this process. It should be a goal that we have, that we recognize that this contract we entered into is expiring. And we want to sit down at the table and talk to our faculty and figure out how can we make sure people are compensated in a way that honors them, but that also maintains the integrity and the financial security of the college. And that, for me, the articulation of that as a primary board goal states something really important to the community overall, because it wasn't listed in our preliminary goals. And when, you know, the conversation you're talking about before, when that's not in the goal, and we know that that's expiring, I think it does say something to faculty about whether or not we care. So putting that in there, and as a board saying, we're going to do this. And we can't control how the process goes, we can't say how the timeline is going to work out, what's, but that we are completely leaning in and we're saying to our president and all the staff that are with him, this is priority one for our board. So where I'm sitting at right now, that's what I was able to do. And as those proposals come forward and the negotiations, we'll see what happens. Steve.
Not to put you on the spot, for the wall, what would your priorities be for a new president?
I think that we need a president who is really cognizant of the fact that this college and this district has changed and is prepared to stand up for that change within our community. And that's not me saying Walt's not doing that, but there are very loud voices coming from other parts of this community college district that say, why aren't we doing what we've always done? And a lot of that has been mandated by the state. And so we need to be better at communicating that. But I am also in a really lucky position as the representative for trustee area two, that I represent a young, diverse community. And I can sit there on that board and say, I am fighting for young, diverse people at this table in a way that some of the other trustees may not be able to. And if I can provide them cover by doing that, so that we can make sure our college is actually in line with the requirements of the state and meeting the needs of our community, then I'm going to do that.
It's also helpful that you had a district election that's giving you that position that you're, you know, before 2008, it was, everything was at large.
Yeah.
And so thinking about, you know, the old days of like, why don't we do what we used to do? Well, what we used to do in the old days, if they were elected people from, in a city from Monterey, they ran the whole district.
Yeah.
And now we're probably getting a voice out in Marina and Fort Worth and Seaside.
And Natalia invited you to talk to Dana.
I could ask either of you this question, actually, because I, I wanted people to explain to people that I, who I meet with children in high school or middle school about this. I didn't understand it well enough to articulate it, but watching that video of you, you were articulating that there's financing through the state for a full-time student coming into MPC to have their tuition as.
The Promise.
The Promise program. And I want to understand that a little bit better, because that does represent the new MPC. I remember when I moved here long ago, I, somebody was telling me, it was really a hard knock, but they were so thrilled that they could take pottery over and over. They'd taken it like 10 times. And they were really good at it. They loved it. It was their recreation. I thought, this sounds so great. This sounds like my favorite pottery. I didn't say that to them. But that's what I was thinking, great, glad you're enjoying it. But, you know, are we turning out nurses or something? Because, so I guess I have two nods. Like, how are we to be helping these kids know that they're focused themselves enough to actually, I assume they have to be a full-time student here to get that benefit. You can't just wander in and take a class and, you know, work at Panera and not take another class. You have to be serious. So how do we, as community people, get these kids focused enough to understand it? I assume, I know their teachers are doing that somewhat, but we as a community have a responsibility also to start the conversation on our own, on the others'. So that's my, that's my question. And then my other question, since you asked about board, I get to ask you.
You asked, but you were going to be close.
Yeah. Well, no, we're only here until about 6:55. I mean, let me know.
So the pottery person, who took ceramics over and over, is there a way to let that person continue, but just simply to prorate the cost with true cost to it?
So. I don't know that answer all the way yet. I'm a pottery question, but I think that.
Just take that pottery way, tell me something.
Yeah. Exploring the continuing education and the revenue generating aspect of it is definitely something I am interested in learning about. It isn't a ball of wax I have been prepared to tackle yet.
I don't expect you to know, but it's an interesting question.
Yeah.
A lot of people really like pottery.
Well, yeah. And they will pay for it, absolutely. So the Promise program, yes, you need to be full-time. It used to be called the Bob Labor, the Morgan Governor's Labor. And it was only available to, and correct me if I'm wrong, students who had financial needs. So Promise now is available to any student who is eligible to attend, as long as you commit to be in full-time. And at MPC, they have some additional, kind of, you need to create a pathway plan and these different things to really show you're committed to it. And right now, it's for one year. The governor is talking about expanding that to two years, which I think is great. I know Walt has trepidations about the student success funding formula, but as I've said at the board, I like the risk. And I think that if we know what's coming down the road, like, let's set a game plan to try to beat the fact that everyone's telling us we're going to fail.
But that one year is enormous.
It's huge.
Benefit, and it gives somebody that structure to fund money for your.
And if you do two years, then you're in a position to transfer, right? So.
Well, no, I want to echo, I want to echo what you're saying. So we are going to beat that funding point, but on a, through a state, through a state lens, what happens with the state coffers, one of the concerns I have is, we're all moving forward, we're all in some sort of, I won't, remember, equilibrium doesn't necessarily mean equal, right? You're in some steady state, and then the change, the state changes the funding point. The name of it is Student-Centered Funding Point. It's really strong political power in the name. What happens is, in the first year of that shift, the funding formula rewards colleges that are already meeting metrics that that new funding formula is based on. They haven't changed a thing. They haven't necessarily opened up a new study hall for an underserved student. They're already perhaps in an urban area, and they already have a certain demographic and a certain success and a certain portfolio. And MPC is engaged in real transformative change with the evidence proven, younger completion, moving in a direction. But that funding formula isn't going to help us. You know, we're going to have to work around it to get there. And the other concern that we have on a state level is, there's at least two metrics that actually correlate negatively to the outcome of the funding formula. So this is done through an analysis at the state level through a logistic regression analysis, and two of the variables actually predict negatively towards the intended outcome. So we're trying to tweak the funding formula. We've got the chancellor's office, we're convening groups of trustees, groups of CEOs, and groups of chief business officers to perfect that funding formula, because the funding formula is having some unintended consequences. There are districts that, because of the way they organize, have increased the number of completions by about 900%, by counting degrees differently and counting completions differently. So they're getting around that funding formula that way. The other thing I'm concerned about is that, once the money is distributed, right, there's a pot of money. Once the money is distributed, next year, say we triple the number of completions, can we then triple the amount of our money we get? No, because you see, that single pot of money has been distributed. So what are we going to get next year? So that's the concern I have. It's not, anyway, so I know some of that was vague, but the devil really is in the details, and we want, I like being rewarded for student success. I think that's important. I have nothing to shy away from from that. So to Yuri's point, we are engaged in change. And it's good that Yuri's comfort with change is on the board, because it's all about change. It's the only thing that we can expect in the future, so it's going to serve us well.
And then to your question about how do we help the community know, I, I think the way that our high school has really embraced this, and Wendy can, you know, talk about it more than I can, is really important, because we're going to have our entire, all the students who are going to our high school knowing about MPC from the day they step foot on that campus.
From ninth grade. They start, they take a college class in ninth grade, learn Julian moment.
Starting in ninth grade.
Amazing. And at the middle school, we've got early college education happening, starting in sixth grade, so that they're ready when they show up in ninth grade. But that's because of the partnership with MPC that we're able to do that.
It's, I've expressed this, you look at the pathways that you see at the different high schools, and you see general education for Marina, and you kind of think, why are we, are we selling our students short in Marina? But then you look at the coursework that's actually being offered under there, and the foundational work that is being set for our kids, so that when they enter into MPC, they've got a lot of those entry-level classes done, and they can start working on some of their major pathway courses. I think that our high school is actually being really smart. So I hope that a message you will deliver back to the community isn't, hey, compare us to PG that's doing computer-aided technology design, and why are we letting General Ed dig into what General Ed looks like? And there's also some really neat stuff they're doing with ethnic studies, to honoring our kids and their cultural background. And one of the things I think I've heard recently was that with the expansion of our pathways program, we need to start talking about the placement of MPC counselors, actually, within our high school. So that will be another way to get that message further out there. So this is one area where I'm really proud to say, I feel like the college is doing a good job, and we need to be singing its praises. And it's just, there is a need, I'm looking at the three of you that are really here, and Debra too, even Sean, even Karen, because she lives in our district, you know. But we need to be a voice and a champion and pull people back in, because it, right now, unless you are connected to MPC, you're not really hearing about it. You're not fluent in it.
Right. We need that, more fluency than as a community institution.
Kathy's on fire.
Well, are you a fish?
No.
Okay. So I'm subject to fluency and pulling people in. My daughter goes to Crumpton Elementary, and a few of her moms there I chat with, you know, and I'm on PT with, have taken English as a second language classes here. And I think that would even be an opportunity to expand and perhaps reach out through the elementary schools. You know, so even just a flyer, you know, not the one that you send with the times of all the classes, which can actually be difficult to read and unapproachable, but maybe just say, English is a second language classes, like, here are the times, very clear. Because I think if more people knew that that's out there, there'd be a lot of members in the community interested.
Yeah. Can you just pay back on that, just to touch? So there's this overlay too, and I think it also changed with the 2009, the funding formula change, where the adult schools, so MPUSD is K-12, and we have the adult schools. So there's some classes that the adult schools are offering, a kind of overlay with what MPC offers. And I know we've been working to try to, like, make sure that those are articulated in such a way that we're not both offering the same thing in the same place, but finding the ways to, like, we've got, and in Marina, 40% of our moms graduate, or give birth without a high school degree or equivalent, right? So we've got a bunch of children coming into kindergarten, and if there was a way in the next door, we could offer that GED class, whether it's through the adult school, whether it's through MPC, because we know that's this big indicator of that child's success for the rest of their educational career. They're there, they're in the parking lot, because those moms are all in the parking lot talking.
Exactly.
Before school, after school. We've got this. And their kids are right there. So when we bring, you know, I think that the Marina campus is great, but it's still, you know, one more stop across town, and you've got to have the time schedules lined up, and we've got to have, you know, just all of the pieces have to come together. But we've got classrooms, we've got families, we've got people, right, right over here. And if there was a way to do that a little bit more coordinated, and again, I think it's through the adult school, you know, in partnership with the K-12 system, so that we're catching those.
You know, this is really exciting to me, because I love community outreach and community engagement and figuring out what's the best way to reach folks. And sometimes it's not always just one way. I don't, I'm not sure, or I don't recall, I'm not about our relationships with communities of faith, because in the work that I do during the daytime, we do a lot of, for Latino engagement, we do a lot of outreach with the churches. So that would, that could be another way. If we could get some advertising in the church bulletin, the power of the pulpit, we have had great success in my daytime job. If we can get the priest, especially in the Catholic Church, to get up there and while he's doing announcements, to talk about, for anyone who's interested in learning English, MPC is offering classes, there's more information in the bulletin. So that could be another way to get.
I agree with you. I've been thinking that same way. But that I have to stress, that when I say fluency in MPC, I'm not talking about English fluency. I am talking about, everybody should be able to talk about MPC, whether or not they have a student there. And a priest could make that happen, or somebody, just to make it, because it's so hard for people to come out to me this. Right, here we are, but it's hard for people. Right? Here we are, but it's hard for people. But if they're at church and somebody is talking to them about it, and to make it accessible to them, that, oh, yeah, you could do this, just occasionally, in the cafes or wherever. It's just to make it so somebody feels like they can talk about this school, because it's not outside of their experience.
I think that's so critical for this area too in particular, because we have The Dunes, and East Garrison, and Sea Haven coming online. We actually have a lot of people who aren't from our area, and so they aren't familiar and don't necessarily have that community-based love for NPC. And so we need to be thinking about this influx of folks to our community and how they become knowledgeable about.
They want the pottery, Yuri.
NPC was recently approached by a company that is doing some work for the city of Seaside, and they actually asked us if we wanted to have our, have NPC on their video portal when you go to the city of Seaside, which I thought, that's a cool idea. Are you going to also do that for Marina? I mean, I think that somebody who's brand-new to the area, I mean, if you're not brand-new to the area, how often are you going to go to your city of Seaside or Marina website? But if you are new to the area, that can be an important place that, first of all, it gives the presentation that the city feels like these are valued partners. But it also gives you the opportunity to put a short little one-minute video up there that talks about, that presents NPC and who they are, and immediately then they know to go to the next step. Which is all we really need initially, is to kind of give them enough information to go to the next step, to find out more. So that could be another, another area. I mean, I'm always looking for affordable ways to continue to get our name out there and our story out there, and enough information that somebody doesn't go by just some preconceived idea or something that they heard somebody else say, and they're actually getting some verifiable information about the institution.
Is that something you need us to like?
I'd love to talk to you about, I mean, when this company told me they're doing it, and you could actually go to, so Seaside's early in their development of it, but Solvang, down south, their portal or whatever is live. If you go to the city of Solvang's website, you'll see a big button of like, look at the videos. And they only allow, you know, a couple of partners in every area. So I think CSUMB and NPC, hopefully, first you jump on it for Seaside. And then that's kind of it. Oh, that's all, the only educational people they have. And you can have a variety of areas that you can be connected to. So if you said healthcare, our video could come up under the healthcare filter as well, because we have classes that are helping, that are providing education on medical assisting, dental assisting, and things like that. So, I mean, for, it's relatively cheap, it's permanent kind of advertising, as opposed to an advertisement in the newspaper that's kind of coming along. I think we have to look at kind of more permanent ways to get our message out there, and then provide a little more information than what you can get in an ad or a try full brochure or something. That and video is a great way to do that.
You mentioned time checks, I'm assuming you're at 6:58 right now, 5:9. But I, at some point, I really, I think this idea about the educational master plan, I wasn't aware that NPC was in the middle of that process or working down that process. I think having MPUSD be a partner in that conversation would be fabulous. And I really have a strong desire to the degree that we can have this campus be a vibrant place that's full of students, not just as a place to capture some folks and then have them travel to another campus. Like, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So anyway, as that proceeds, I'd love to be able to work on that. And then also, just out of curiosity, and we can circle back to this later, but just how many classes are actually held on this campus? How many students are on this campus on a regular basis? Are we utilizing, I mean, I'm here tonight, and like, I don't see anyone. So I'm not sure if that's normal or if that's not normal. Oh, good, we've got students. So anyway, I'm just curious things that at some point I'd love to, you know, know more about.
So all of our head school partners are definitely part of the education master planning process. It's just in its infancy, it's going to ramp up and fall, as is CSUMB for sure. So we have the stats on the number of students that are here, the number of sections. It's increased by, here on this campus, by about 27% the last three years in terms of the enrollment. And so our intention to not make this, just got to come here and you got to go somewhere else. So we appreciate that support.
And then can I just make a final comment? So on, speaking of educational funding, so although it's not directly related to NPC, the state of California, we're having a rally in Sacramento on May 22nd to rally for educational funding for K-12 education, which when we do well in K-12, we make it a lot easier for you to do your job and beyond. So we're going to have a little rally at 11:30 at our Terrace Elementary School on May 22nd. And we'd love to have everyone come out and join us, show your support, wear red. We'll take some photos in front of the school bus with some children. It'll be really short and fast, but it will, I think, send a strong message to the community that I know our community cares about education, I know our community cares about kids. And just as MPUSD is sort of a first point of contact for these families, you guys are right there with us. So it'd be great to have everyone come out and support. Thank you for hosting, Gary, this was great.
Well, thank you. I appreciate everybody who came, including all the staff, I didn't expect that. But yeah, this is a first time, and I hope that you will share with your friends and your neighbors that it's a place for dialogue, that we don't often get to have and to share ideas. And particularly as we move into this education master planning phase, I'm going to be pushing very hard to say we need to do more than just have people come to the board meeting, and we can't expect everyone to come to Monterey. And I'm going to need you to help me rally the troops, so to prove to them that if we bring our message to them, people will participate in that conversation. So thanks again for coming, you guys are awesome.